It is about 10 minutes after six. I will call to order the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We do have a quorum present, and at this time, we're going to go into closed session under section 551.071, 551.074, and 551.0821 of the Texas Government Code. It is 8:30. We will reconvene in open session the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under sections 551.074, 551.0821, and 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. Unless I hear an objection from the Board, I'm going to suggest that we take item 5A, discussion, possible action on students' disciplinary expulsion appeal out of order, and dispose of that on the front. Is there any objection? All right. Then, we will move down to item 5A, discussion of possible action on review of a student's discipline expulsion appeal, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Ms. Cordway.
I move that we affirm the administration's decision.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we affirm the administration's decision with respect to the disciplinary expulsion. I know we've had deliberation and discussion in closed session, so I will proceed to a vote. All those in favor of affirming the administration's decision, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries by vote of three to two, and that will be upheld. We'll jump back up to item four, presentation and discussion of budget information. Ms. Davis.
We have some preliminary information about where we are with revenues. You do have a new packet in your, or new presentation in your packets because the information is changing daily, and it was updated as about 3 o'clock this afternoon with some new information. We're going to talk a little bit first about where we are, what it looks like. House Bill 3 will be the school funding bill. It still is in the Senate right now. They were supposed to have heard it this past Tuesday. They will not really, didn't have their changes together in the Senate, so they're now going to review it, I think, next week. But this is a little bit, I'm not going to go through all of this since it's very late, but these are, the first few pages that we have here are the changes in the allocations between current law and the committee substitute for House Bill 3. The biggest driver of the additional funding is that change that you see on the top line of the change in the basic allotment that will go from $5,001.40 was our basic allotment. We were getting the cost of education index, so we were at the $5,005.41, and the new basic allotment is the $6,030 that you see. There are changes that you see down the page for change, some changes in weights. One of the big questions right now happens to be in compensatory education because they're going to a new way of, a lot of districts have gone to that community eligibility program for food service, and they're no longer getting free and reduced lunch applications. So across the state, they're having an issue with getting numbers for compensatory education. And so they're going to census blocks, and a lot of us don't yet kind of know where we're going to fall with those census blocks. But that's a change in comp ed. We have some deleted allocations that are going into the basic allotment. The cost of education index, that has given us additional money because we were at 1.11. It will have some impact on our TRS as well. We'll talk about that in a minute. But the high school allotment, gifted and talented allotment, and staff allotments are gone. You can see what we were getting before. We have some new allotments, dyslexia. We've got a small allotment there, early education allotment. This allotment is on K through 3, kids that are disadvantaged, educationally disadvantaged. That hasn't really been defined. We're, right now, they're thinking that means economically disadvantaged and bilingual. This, they are going to require full day pre-K for eligible students next year. And I don't know why they just didn't fund pre-K for a full day instead of the half-day they're doing now, but instead, they added this allotment to fund full-day pre-K. The school safety allotment's been cut from the House Bill, oh no, it's been cut from the Senate. It's still in the House Bill right now, but there's not an amount that's been determined. So the Tier 2 structure, this one's a little bit more complicated. I'm not really going to go through this. They decided that Austin's values are going up too fast to attach Tier 2 to Austin values, so they've kind of changed that structure a little bit. That is going down, but with the basic allotment going up, we should still gain a little money there. And then the copper pennies amount went up some. That then, because of all those changes, it will kind of define our WADA that a lot of our funding is based on, and we'll also look at the impact of that in a minute. Okay, this was, this slide was in your original presentation that's in your, the online presentation. The X is because this whole tax rate calculation is wrong. I had a note down below that Mo Casey was saying it was different from what some of the others were saying, and that is the case. So, again, I'll let you just kind of look at this. We no longer have an effective tax rate. It's now called the no-new-revenue rate. We don't have a rollback rate. It's the voter-approved rate. So we're going to have some new terminology as we go through this, this year. I'm just going to get down to where we have this new slide of what I had calculated before. Our MNO rate for next year will go from $1.17 to $1.929. That, it compresses our, Tier 1 rate was a dollar. That compresses down to 96 cents. Our Tier 2 rate was 6 cents. The 6 cents is not compressed. The Tier 2, Level 2 rate that we had before, which was the difference between the $1.6 and the $1.17, is compressed, but we can now take 2 of those pennies and make them golden pennies instead of copper pennies. It's a little bit complicated, but anyway, we get, 96 cents is our compressed rate for Tier 1. We have 8 cents for golden pennies in Tier 2, and then we'll have 5.29 cents for our copper pennies in Tier 2, Level 2. Because our rate was above the $1.6, we will not be able to do a TRE. I know you guys are really looking forward to do another TRE, but we'll not be able to do a TRE in 1920. Any district that had their rate at that, above the $1.6, is not eligible to do that. This is just kind of what it looks like, the pieces that we got to, the $1.17, and then the $1.929 for this next year. There is that question about the 2.5 percent cap that's in the Senate bill. Actually, the House Bill 3, the way they're structuring it, is actually more restrictive than the Senate bill because they don't compress the rate the same way, and the 2.5 percent on what is still the effective rate would actually be a, we could generate more money. So that is one of the...
Under the House version, it's less restrictive?
The House version is more restrictive ultimately.
Okay.
But that's one of the things that's going to be worked out between the two because that's still one of, that and salaries are two of the biggest areas that they are disagreeing at this time. And then, there's also the issue of pay-for-performance that the Senate wants that the House is not including. So what this means for us dollar-wise. Now, again, the numbers that you're going to see in red here are new from your other schedule because the original template from Omar Garcia had the middle-school K members duplicated. So unfortunately, this went down $1,001,000 from earlier this week. We're going to pick up $5 million in our regular ed, about $900,000 in special ed, about $1,007,000 in career and technology. We lose $438,000 in gifted and talented. Pick up 3.4 million in comp ed, $124,000 in bilingual. The new dyslexia allotment will give us $293,000. That K3, early reading allotment, we talked about, that's supposed to fund pre-K, is $2.3 million. High school allotment that we're losing was just under $1 million. And then, I show that we're losing $245,000 because I followed what they told, how they told us to calculate the transportation allotment, but I'm not sure that this is actually accurate, that we're really going to lose there. But for now, that's what that shows. So in Tier 1, we're picking up $12 million. Our local fund assignment is lower because our tax rate is lower, so we will actually pick up about $14.3 million in Tier 1. Going to our Tier 2 funding, those golden pennies, the 6 cents in the golden pennies will pick up $1,006,000. In our copper pennies, we pick up another $1,006,000 for about $3.2 million. We do then, in our other programs, we lose that staff allotment. Nothing's really been said about that, the supplemental TIF payment that we get, so right now, the templates we're looking at, it's just keeping that the same as it's been. So our total state aid goes up $16.9 million. But our, then our local revenue will go down because our tax rate is going down. So we lose about $4.4 million in property tax revenue. So right now, it looks like we're gaining $12.5 million next year, and a little bit less in the following year, but that's partially because our numbers are projected to go down. So this bill, right now, dedicates $2.7 billion for that core-sense school property tax compression, and it, this one still does utilize the prior year's property values. The Senate bill goes to current year, which will have some impact as property values have been going up between 8 and 10 percent across the state. I am currently using, because we don't have our preliminary values yet, I'm currently using about 8.5 percent. That's the average of our last five years. The bulk of the funding is through that, like I said, the basic allotment, and it reduces recapture for those districts that were in a recapture situation by about 40 percent. Now, the House bill for salary increases requires 25 percent of any basic allotment increase to be spent on non-administrative pay raises. So we got about 97 employees in this district that are considered by PMS to be administrators, and so those people would not be included in this, but all of the other employees would. We don't know, we'll talk about that in a minute because we're not quite sure what that means. The spending restrictions on the special programs at one point early in the bill, those had been lifted. There was no restrictions on the bilingual and comp ed. We could spend them however we wanted. Those are back in place. And then, it requires the districts to adopt and develop a lot of new policies and a lot of new plans, and there's a lot of new reporting tied to all of this. So on the Senate substitute, again, the pay raise is one of the big issues. The Senate bill was putting $5,000 on top of our salary schedule for teachers and librarians only. That's the only thing that's specified. That would cost Waco ISD about $5.1 million of that $12.5 million. So then, some of the other things, like I said earlier, it includes current-year property values and that outcomes-based funding, and then it does have the educator effectiveness funding as well, unlike the House...
Cheryl, excuse me for being a little rough, but one of the things I think you taught me is that this bill that passes for the pay raises for the teachers, that money always comes slow from the state, so we're going to have to have money in place to cover these until, until we get money, that's still going to be the same scenario as usual.
Well, their payment schedule, we used to be kind of delayed on our last payment, but that's no longer the case. They've kind of fixed that. Yes, we have plenty of money to make payments, and our payment schedule is really scheduled to where it should cover us as we go through the year, but we should be fine with that.
Okay.
But yes, it's a lot of, I just hope it's in place two years from now, and we don't have to go through what we did in 2011, and they cut us by about $5 or $6 or $12 million. Okay, so this is the salary, as we, I've kind of talked about these salary increase issues, the difference between the House bill and the Senate bill. So the estimated cost to Waco on the House bill is about 4.7 or 3.4, depending on which number you're looking at. And then, the cost to Waco ISD on the Senate side is about, actually about $4.5 million. The average employee increase in the House for our employees would be somewhere between, like I said, depending on which number they're taking 25 percent of, $2,115 or $1,541. The average teacher increase would be $5,413 because, again, this is on top of where they would already go on the step on our current schedule. And so, under here, I have on the House, what is the increase in the basic allotment? Is that the increase in Tier 1? Is that the increase of all the state funding? Is that the increase of all the state funding less what we lose in tax money? There's a lot of questions as far as what that means. And then, there's another question. It says you have to give the same amount to all full-time employees. We have cafeteria workers who work four hours a day that are considered full-time employees. So if we're giving $1,500 to an employee that works eight hours a day, does the employee that works four hours a day get $1,500? There's still a lot of questions about what, how these rules are going to be written once, if this is what is adopted. On teacher retirement, pretty much the same across the board here. They are, the contribution rate for the members stays at 7.7 right now. The state's contribution, or for this coming year, the state's contribution also stays at 6.8 through 2021, and then it starts increasing after that on the House bill, but it's not anything in the Senate bill at this point. One of the things that's going to cost us some money, though, is depending on what they do with a statutory minimum schedule, because when we pay TRS as a district for teachers, we pay, because the statutory minimum schedule that's adopted by the state is very low, and most districts pay it much higher than stat men. The difference between what we pay a teacher at, say, year 1, and what the statutory minimum schedule says for year 1, we have to pay TRS for, the state share of TRS. The state does not pay it, the district pays it. That number currently, that year-one statutory minimum schedule is multiplied by the cost of education index, so it actually goes up 1.11 percent, and so it's a higher number for us. When they eliminate the cost of education index, that goes back down unless they fix the statutory minimum schedule, which that, I estimated that for the school alliance earlier this year, and that's somewhere between $320,000 and $350,000 that will impact us if they don't raise the stat men schedule. So that's something we're looking at, looking for, too. On our federal funding, we've got our preliminary planning estimates here for, under our ESA program, which is, of course, most of the dollars. Title 1 has gone down about $100,000, but the other three programs have come up some, which is different. We've been losing money in our Title 2 the last few years, but it's up about $17,000, and bilingual is up about $16,000, and then our Title 4 is up about $9,000. So our net, and our federal programs, were down about $55,000. That's probably attributable to some decline in students. Looking, again, we kind of looked at this chart on our enrollment last month. We are down. This year, on our snapshot, we were at 14,756 in enrollment. We're projecting right now an ADA of 13,342. Looking at kind of what we're thinking right now for budget purposes, we're looking at We have had, most of our decreases the last couple of years have been at elementary. We've had increases at second, at high school particularly, but our elementaries are down, so that's feeding up through the schedule. And I made a note down here that we are down 67 from last year to this year, PMS snapshot date, but we actually added two sections of pre-K 3-year-olds, which was 42 students. So we're really, if we had taken our population to population of pre-K 4 and up, we are down about 109 kids this year. And so, we're going to use an ADA for budget right now of 13,257. And that's based on the end of the four, six weeks. So that's kind of where we are. We have a lot of planning to do with money. There is a lot of concern out there about the sustainability. There is a resolution, I think Huberty's bringing forward, to increase sales taxes. It'll have to go to the voters in next November, and there's some speculation on how much of the sustainability of this and the lowering of property taxes will be dependent on that sales tax being passed by the voters. It's a 1 cent sales tax increase. The state rate is 6.25. It would go to 7.25 cents. So we, I think, we've talked a lot, we've been talking in Cabinet about it. We have a lot of needs. We're going to be bringing forward a technology plan that has, we've been working on for infrastructure particularly. It's about, I think, last we talked was about $5.5 million over five years, so there's needs for technology. We have started, you know, our capital improvement plan for facilities. We'll be bringing that forward. So I think there, there is a field that we would like as much as possible to put some of this money into one-time expenditures for our, they're not really one-time because we've got this plan for five years of stuff we need, but they're not recurring costs like salaries. And so we're trying to really beef up some of those programs that we've been neglecting a little bit, but we'll be bringing those forward, you know, for the next couple of months, so you'll see some of those plans that we have in place. Do you have any questions? I've got another little piece we're going to do on Guama, Guaca, but if you have any questions about the, where we are or next month, at the end of this month, we get our preliminary property values, so we'll have a little bit better idea of that, too, when we come back next month. Okay. So here we are. We're going to talk a little bit about the Greater Waco Advanced Academies. I was asked to bring this, some of this information forward. What we've got is our, first of all, we have our enrollment history here, and this is Guama on this first page. You can kind of see, the top part is actually the out-of-district students, and then you have the university high students, and on the top bar is the Waco high students. You can see how the numbers have really decreased with the out-of-district participation, but increased tremendously in district, particularly Waco High has had a big increase projected for next year. The chart at the bottom is the number of districts that are participating in the program. The highest number in 1516 was 13 right now, and I don't know, I ended up working with districts, but right now, we have about nine that are projected to participate in the numbers we're showing tonight.
Cheryl, just, the number of districts is declining, but am I reading that correctly? The projected number of students from other districts is actually projected to go up next year?
Yes.
About nine or 10 students?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So the next chart is then on Guaca, and you can see that the same pattern basically there. We had a real high year in 1617, the second year. The numbers dropped quite a bit that following year, but have, went back up in this current year, and we're projecting a large increase for next year. Again, that, we didn't ever have 13 districts. We had 12 districts in 1718, and that's kind of tapered off with, again, we have about nine projected for next year to participate. No, no, that might have changed as a, is that still...
It's a constant change. We have put all our efforts in recruiting in Waco, in Midway, the larger schools in the fall, and we are still working. Some of our small districts have not even been choice-requested for this year, but we're just excited about the number from Waco ISD.
So the next couple of slides are the financial recap from the two programs since inception. So the first page, again, is Guama, and you can see, kind of down at the bottom, I did include in Guama where we had the magnet school program grant that we got, the federal grant we received, because that did fund a lot of what we did in that program in the early years, particularly some of the construction and equipment costs of that program. So there wasn't a need to supplement it from our general fund. But down at the very bottom of the page in the, kind of next to the last column, it shows what those operating transfers cumulative have been from Waco ISD's general fund plus other expenditures that we've made in the general fund. And it also shows from that grant that we had that indirect cost that went into the general fund. So net, we've spent about $800,000 out of our general fund to help supplement that program over the five years. The numbers you see up above in that same column in red are sort of projections based on what the enrollment actually, the, because that column before it is just budget right now, but projecting what the revenues are going to be based on what the enrollments ended up being. You see that it's down, not a lot, but about $11,000, I think, in revenue from what we had originally thought. Same thing now for Guaca. Here is, there's, now, they have one less year of operation than Guama did, but, and they did not have a startup grant, so all of those initial costs of remodeling the building and, you know, the equipment and all that came from our local CTE budget, general fund budget originally. So we have put a little bit more, about twice as much, into that program from the general fund as we did for Guama, but we didn't have the grant. So it's about $1,009,000 that we have put into Guaca from the general fund. Their numbers, though, are up considerably from what we budgeted originally, so it's looking right now that we're going to have about $70,000 increase in revenue over what was budgeted. We'll talk, I have a column also there for the proposed budget, but we'll talk about that kind of in another slide. So budget assumptions, when I build these 1920 budgets right now, because I don't know exactly what's going to happen with salaries, I have built in about a 7 percent salary increase. We also have built in... We also have built in, right now, Guama, Guaca are sharing a counselor, so we built in a counselor for each program in these numbers that you're seeing. And then, there's two additional teachers at Guaca, one teacher for medical professionals and then another for medical microbiology and pathophysiology. The other cost increases that you see, we, I kind of increased them based on the increases in population, plus about a two percent inflation adjustment, and then we didn't change, that column that you saw on the previous page, there was no change in tuition or the billing rate. Now, we have some scenarios that we're looking at for tuition rates, and also, as you know, I've not always been comfortable with the projections on enrollments. I'm an accountant, conservative when it comes to that, so I built these projections at ninety percent, eighty-five percent to see, just in case, because actually, it's been running about eighty-five percent of what the original projections. We do have better numbers this year, we have choice sheets done, so we do know who has signed up for Waco ISD, and that's the bulk of the numbers. But, you know, I'm still a little leery of the hundred percent. So, for Guama, to set a break-even tuition based on the numbers, if I take a hundred percent of the projection, we would need to set a tuition rate at forty-seven hundred dollars. If I take that at ninety percent, we'd probably need to set a tuition rate of about five thousand one twenty. At eighty-five percent, we would need a tuition rate of five thousand four twenty-seven. Some of our discussion, we have had the same tuition rate for both programs. And with Guaca growing, they could help, you know, if we keep the same tuition rate, they could help support Guama, or we could set different tuition rates for each program that would fund each program. So, looking at Guaca, then kind of the same thing at ninety percent and eighty-five percent, the tuition, I, we wouldn't actually have to, at ninety percent, it would fund the program, and so we wouldn't even have to increase the tuition rate. If the numbers at a hundred percent come out, we could actually lower the tuition rate to about thirty-four hundred dollars. If the numbers are at eighty-five percent, it would take about a four thousand dollar tuition rate to fully fund the program. But, we're getting twelve million dollars because the basic allotment's going up, well, guess what, everybody's getting a basic allotment adjustment, and it has a big impact on Career and Technology's revenues for the districts as well. So, this is what we will generate, Waco ISD will generate for Career and Technology next year.
Cheryl, can we go back to the tuition scenarios? Has there been any discussion with the other districts about these scenarios and what the tuition would need to be based on the, you know, a percentage of the projected enrollment?
No. We went to take, bring it to, we have had some discussions with the Guama Advisory Board as far as not, not projections here, but those previous slides on the recap and where we've been and how, because some of them were under the impression that Waco ISD was making money off of it. And so, we have had some discussions about those numbers, but we have not shown any scenarios at this point. As Donna said, we're still getting numbers from some of the other districts right now, and kind of still looking at what the state revenue might do, and then we did want to bring it forward to you all to just kind of see what your feel would be on this before we went forward to the other districts.
When we, I mean, the best analogy I can think of would be something like Challenge Academy where we set a rate. When we adjust that tuition, do we visit with the superintendents or that advisor, you know, the district representatives on the advisory board before you bring it to us, or do we just set it and then tell them this is what we've done? I just can't remember the process.
Well, so, Challenge is a little bit different. Challenge has its own board.
Right.
And so, their board ha, is made up of representatives from the other districts as well as the detention center, and Judge Coley serves on that board, leads that board. So, their board actually approves the rates prior to it coming to you, because then, once that, that board approves rates, then it goes out to all the districts in the form of their inter-local agreement, their MOU, to approve.
And so, the districts, I guess, directly get to have input on that rate because they're representatives of the one voting on it before it comes to us.
Correct. And we had a meeting actually this morning with the Challenge Academy board. We meet every two months and go over the financials, and so they're well aware, you know, if there's going to be an issue, and we have changed those rates each year, up or down, and right now, I have about thirty-six hundred in the black.
Okay. I guess that was my thought, was, you know, when we've had tuition adjustments on Challenge, there's no sticker shock because they've got representatives on that board that review it, review the financials, and then it comes to us. Guama's board is primarily representatives of industry. Do we have other district?
Right, it's mainly district. We have a few, we've had district members come at times, but not full districts at the time. Guama is all industry at this point.
Right. I just don't want there to be, you know, if we were to go, for example, with the eighty-five percent number, and if we wanted to go all the way up to break even, and I'm not saying you're proposing that, I just wouldn't want there to be a significant sticker shock with folks seeing that for the first time that we've bumped it up. And I, I don't know the best process or vehicle for getting input from the other nine districts because they're, because they're not, you know, it's a different structure than Challenge because they're not reviewing the financials every month or every other month, and they won't, they don't have direct input on what that tuition rate is.
And seeing, the other one that we have is the Day School for the Deaf, because we're also the fiscal agent there, but they also have a board that's made up of other districts too. And so, it's sort of the same, not exact, doesn't work exactly the same way as Challenge does, but they basically get a bill at the end of the year and say, you're going to pay this much money, and it's quite hefty. But, they all three, well, the Advanced Academies, the Day School for the Deaf, and Challenge all work similarly, but a little bit different.
And Donna, don't get me wrong, I understand, I mean, the challenge is presented by distance and some of the scheduling issues we've encountered with some of the smaller districts, and I know, and I think it was appropriate to focus our efforts primarily on Waco ISD and Midway because that's where most of the kids are, and obviously, those efforts have borne fruit because your projections are considerably higher than what we've had the last couple of years, and I want to congratulate you on that. Those smaller districts that are sending fewer kids, I would hate for them to see it go, if they're budgeting or anticipating thirty-eight hundred and they get told fifty-five hundred, that's, I would just be concerned that we would lose some kids there.
I would say that I've spent some time with, for example, Chilton Superintendent was the last meeting I had, and I went through and gave him the formula on how C T E funding, you know, came across. I, I think the hard part for the recruiting aspect is that, to me, we ought to look at setting the tuition rate in the fall, so as we recruit, we know what to tell them to expect, because we've been using this thirty-eight hundred dollars, perhaps that's something I should have said we don't know for sure, but if we could set tuition rates earlier in the year, then when you're recruiting, we could have those conversations like I've had with children, in which this is what it's costing, this is what you'll be bringing in. So, I know that's difficult and that, that's probably not something I, I'm just telling you.
No, I, I know, I think it's.
Recruiting aspect, that's, that's a difficult task.
Right. You know, and we may also want to give some thought to formal representation of the participating districts on the advisory board. And that way, similar to our other programs where we're fiscal agent, they're participating on the front end, and they, you know, we might even, as the others do, let them set the anticipated tuition, and then it come to the board, and they can.
That's excellent.
And that's just something, that way, there's a dialogue, and it's not just us, as you say, after you've already recruited, then giving them a price after they've already committed to doing it. Just something to think about. I've, you know, or maybe the idea of setting it a year in advance before you go out on the recruiting circuit is a, another avenue. I just, I know everybody's committed to it, I, I know we can't, we, we need to make sure we're not interested in making money on it, we just need to make sure we're not diverting money from other necessary programs to fund that exclusively, and I think just dialoguing with those other districts on what the tuition should be would be beneficial.
I think you cry about that.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, I mean.
That's okay, because I mean, that's kind of why we wanted to bring it forward to see, you know, kind of what we can stomach. I mean, what do we, what direction we want to go, whether we want, you know, sort of get, have some dialogue or have some ideas on, is it, do we want different tuition rates? Do we want Guaca to, you know, charge a rate to the districts that are participating, Guaca that's going to cover Guama, because that might not be the same district? So, I mean, I think that's something to look at as well. Now, this is what they're going to generate for that, for those kids in that program. They are doing four contact hours, so with an increase in the basic allotment from the fifty-five forty-one to the sixty-thirty, this is point six six seven, well, two-thirds of F T E. The wait for a career in technology is one point three five, so they generate, they will be generating five thousand four twenty-seven for each one of these students in attendance.
Mr. President. Ms. Davis. Ms. McCaffrey. I mean, you know, you talk about that we not basically in this to make money or whatever, but if, if we do at some point where that we, that we are supposedly making money, you want that money just go back into the individual programs, or will that money be spread out through the district?
Well, I guess, we look at, well, for example, at Guama, at the Healthcare Academy, if we are, we don't decrease, we'll be able to do things like pay for their certifications, pay for other things within that program. And so, I guess, the point of us making a little money, I haven't even, I mean, I'm just really working hard at getting it to break even at this point. But, you know, as we move forward, I mean, we will have things that will need to be replaced, and so if we get to the point where there is a budget surplus, then I would think it would need to go back into that program to replace those things, because, you know, computers we bought when we began are not going to be good down the road. So, you know, at some point, we're going to have to look at rejuvenating ourselves.
Well, but, but, but then still, like I'm saying, if one makes money, that money would be put back into that program.
Yes, sir. That would be my thought.
And not be used for the other, for, for the other program. And, and like I say, whether it is to buy pencils and papers for the students.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and that has not actually been the case right now.
We haven't made money yet.
Because we have had, I think, one year, Guaca did makes, one of them, maybe it was year of Guama because they had the grant, was making money.
Yes.
And so, it did help cover the other program. And that's, the way we've kind of run this right now is the two programs help cover each other or not. So, but we could make that, we could do something different if we, if we got these two programs stable to where they were pretty much at a break even, I think that could easily happen. We can put some money, have each program keep whatever revenue they generate that's above their expenditures, and it can go back in, because I have it set, it's not in the general fund. We do have it set up in a special revenue fund, so whatever they keep, they made, could be kept. Challenge Academy last year ended up with about ninety thousand dollars over, and so that was part of what they started off this year. And for them, you know, when we adopt, when we set the rates, we kind of know what their budget's going to be and what program they need for the following year, if they need computers or something, they run on a shoestring anyway, but, and we set the rates accordingly. Sometimes we don't guess right because the participation changes a lot. We have a bad year last year, but we can do the same thing with these.
But that's not, that's not really a, a board decision, our decision, would that, that be more only for their local, I mean, you know, for the industry people and stuff like that, would make that decision on how.
No, it's absolutely a Waco ISD board decision.
It's the our decision, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Because it's not legally run by another board like the Challenge Academy
True.
or the Day School for the Deaf, they, that has a different responsibility.
This board would be, we'd be fully responsible.
You are the governing board.
You are the governing board.
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Cheryl and Donna, I agree with Pat on the concept of the board, whether you expand the board or shuffle the representation or whatever, I think that's a, a very good concept to be considered. And then, Donna, you had mentioned, you know, earlier, having the, the tuition schedule, if you will. Would it work to have a, a tiered schedule where districts would know at a certain level of student participation, their tuition would be X, so that it's declining, it's either an increasing scale or a declining scale?
We, Cheryl and I actually, and Cheryl spent a lot of time exploring that, and David did, and, and that's, that, while that appears to be something quite, our board, the Guama board asked for that, that's kind of a difficult thing because of percentages, so when you talk about, it's the math part, I'm going to let you know.
Well, I mean, really, the two districts that would benefit from that would be Waco ISD.
And Midway.
And Midway. I mean, because the little districts only sometimes have three or four kids there.
Okay.
So, we looked at that, because we were trying to figure out a way of maybe doing that, but they're the ones that are actually coming some of the longest distances and...
But maybe it's not by district, maybe it's by total enrollment, I don't know. And if you can get that district with three up to five, and we hit another tier, everyone wins, but, you know.
Well, and that would happen anyway, because the more kids we get in the program, then we can lower the tuition.
I just didn't know if it would be beneficial, and you've already looked at it, beneficial to know that on the front end as districts might consider participation.
And, and I know that in each of the different, with the adjusted allotment, that's different for every district. Some of the small districts may have a higher adjusted allotment than we do, so we've looked at a lot of different scenarios, and I, I think that I totally agree with, with the board in saying that this tuition, this cost needs to be, and I really do commend Cheryl and David for coming to the Guama board and really talking through that so that they understood more of how, they really didn't understand, but I think that that needs to be done as well with our member districts so that they see, and we've tried to do more of that this year with meeting, like I said, the last one I met with, was Brandon Hubbard at, at Chilton, and they are sending a larger number of students this next year.
I mean, my head sends some of the biggest numbers
Yes.
from any of the smaller districts.
From Lindsley.
And they have probably the longest distance to travel.
Right.
So, it's very interesting who chooses to participate and who doesn't. But I do think that we can do some of this. I am fine, as long as you all are fine moving money from the general fund to support the program when it's in the red, I am fine using a hundred percent.
Fine, fine.
And calculating, or leaving the tuition rate at where it is, but we will, you know, I just want to make sure that you all are aware that there will probably be, we'll need to supplement it from the general fund if we do that, so.
Well, even if you assume the projections are a hundred percent accurate for Guama to break even, there would still have to be a small increase. You'd still have to look at increasing it nine hundred dollars to break even.
Yes, to break even.
I will say, the good news is, if you look just at the operating expense, I mean, there's a significant reduction in the transfer for Guaca this year compared to last year, and there's even a, there's a slight, a slight reduction in what we had to transfer for Guama, so it's getting, we're incrementally going that direction over the last couple of years anyway.
And we could do something in between. I mean, we don't have to go the whole break even for Guama, we might decide to do a couple hundred dollars or something for Guama and leave Guaca the same.
Right.
But, you know, I just, again, I wanted to show you what the whole picture was. We've been talking with the advisory board at Guama about it and kind of get feedback from you guys on what you thought we should do.
At what point do we need to set that rate, Donna, to get the districts, once we have their, at what point do we send invoices out to them? I mean, I know you would have liked to have had it last fall, I, I... liked to have had it last fall, I, I get that.
Well, the, we will be sending out MOUs for them, and it, be quite frank, I would have loved it set in January, but yesterday would have been nice. You know, I mean, I'm just, today, I guess, I guess my, my concern reflected what you said. I have been, we've been recruiting at our current tuition rate. And so that will mean, you know, if there's increase in tuition, I will want to have a very, have a meeting with the superintendents of the district, explain to them the finances, and be very specific about that. I, I, like I said, I would, I feel like that as we, we move forward, I want that set as early as possible, because it makes a second trip back to Chilton or a second trip back to even Midway to go back now and say, we've, we've changed the tuition rate. We will do that if that's the board, if the board so chooses for us to do that. But the sooner we can set the tuition rate, the better off we are, because you have to remember, we're recruiting from August. We'll start August, in August recruiting for the fall of 2020. And, you know, it's that type of thing. With our, getting our kids', you know, schedules done early, it's really helped us a lot to focus on the small schools. But we are, we hit the ground running to start hitting with those new kids the moment the school year starts. So it makes, you know.
And I, again, I want to be a Johnny one note, but it does look like, I mean, we're, if we restructure that board, then when you look out at 2021, and there may be a, a mechanism where those districts can have input on what this is, and they help set the rate, and then you're not having to make a second trip back out there. So we're really looking at just this next school year, where you've already completed the recruiting, and we haven't yet told them. If we adjust the tuition, they're not aware of that.
The only thing I want to say about that.
Yeah.
Is the year they're getting the money.
That's true.
I will say this, and it's one of the things that I have purposefully fixed and tried to do, is I have spent a lot more time with superintendents, talking to them about how this is their program. I mean, you know, I told Chilton, I said, well, congratulations, you now have a electronics and robotics program, you didn't have it yesterday, because you do your first two years on your campus, and now you come to us. And so now you can go to your board and say, we suddenly now have this, and we suddenly have this, because I think that we need to make them feel like this is where they're sending their school, and that it's, they're equal parts. So I would love to have a board that we look at tuition rates for.
Well, and also, to have the dialogue on what's the value add.
Correct.
We can provide those districts to where they want to continue to participate. That way, it's not a sense of obligation as much as it is Guam or Guaca's offering something they can't do themselves.
Correct.
And there's a value add there that they're, they're willing to spend the money on.
And most of the districts that are participating are participating both programs.
Yes.
There's a few that are not, but if we were lowering the rate in one, and then going up a little bit in the other, that would help offset it as well. So that's kind of why I suggested, since it looks like Guaca's going to make money, then we could look at something like that, too.
I, I got a question. If the smaller districts, I mean, we give the tuition rate, but then they still have the transportation and all these other issues they have to deal with. Is, I mean, I, I guess it's also based on the number of students that they send in. Is that one of the problems that we find with these smaller districts, that, that maybe the tuition is not that bad, but maybe, you know, when you consider buses and fuel and, and, and all the costs, and that's, that's above and beyond the tuition that they have to include into that budget?
Well, there's a couple of things that I can say about that, because this is one of the conversations I've had a lot this last year. When you look at what you generate for career and technology, you have programs within our, with the career and technology program that are very low, they don't cost a lot to run, it's usually the cost of a teacher, those are shorter. And so sometimes it's hard for smaller districts to see this tuition as what they're generating following the child. And so I've tried to talk them through that. When you look at the amount of money a district generates in career and technology funds, by law, we only have to be given fifty-eight percent of that, those funds. And so when I sit down with them, I say, this is the thirty-eight hundred dollars, this is what you're going to generate, this is how much above the third, you know, this is how close you are to that fifty-eight percent, so that they can see how much money. Then all these projections we get for ADA are all, all based on a hundred percent of attendance. So we know that's not going to happen. So you've got to adjust for that. So they have to look at their budget in terms. Now, as far as the transportation, the state reimburses them at the end of the school year for any transportation costs that they incurred, but they have to have it up front. So we have some that wiggle there a little bit.
Well, not really at the, even at the end of the school year, it's part of your foundation school program that's paid out over the year. So.
Yeah, so there is that, but there are other costs. I know that Troy comes and their bus sits at Cameron Park for two hours while the kids are in class. So, you know, I think that there are some very important conversations to be had with the other districts on the costs.
Cheryl, last question. On the slide you've got up there right now, the revenue per FTE.
For partial FTE.
For, goes from forty-nine to fifty-four. I mean, how much of that is? So you've got a five-hundred dollar increase overall for the student, period. And so.
For a partial FTE, because that's only point-six-six-seven.
Right.
That's two-thirds.
Well, I'm talking on your first line, the adjusted allotment.
Oh, okay, yes. And then just the basic allotment, okay.
So I guess what I'm finding right there is, if we go to them and say, you're making an extra five-hundred dollars per kid on your state funding, and I know this is based on our allotment, but how much of that is directly attributable to them being in career and technology, and how much of that is just because it's the five-hundred dollars in the adjusted allotment?
Well, but this is basically on career and technology FTEs. Career and technology come out of our regular ed in funding. So this is for career and technology student only.
But if they weren't a career and technology student, what would be the difference between new law and old law?
Thirty-five percent less. Because the, the weight for career and technology didn't change, so it'd basically be thirty-five percent less. Because actually, that sixty-thirty isn't multiplied by the one-point-three-five yet. That's, that's the basic allotment without the weight. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't put a line in for that.
That's right.
Okay.
So just coming up, May-June, we're hope, we'll have, like I said, the property values, preliminary property values next month. Then we, and we have to, by law, spend some time talking about those with you. And then we'll have projections of our other costs, our utilities, property insurance is another thing we're looking at, because we're hearing that property insurance rates are doubling at places. And so then, new position requests, two-and-a-half million right now. And then other additional requests that might be coming up.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Cheryl. Next item is the monthly financial report. I know it's in the packet. Is there anything else you wanted to highlight? Are there any questions on the monthly financials? All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Lone Star Governance, Goal Progress Measure 3.1, Number of Cape Internship Applications. Ms. McThaithen. It is Donna Knatt.
This is Donna Knatt. All right. Good evening. I'm really excited about our internship program this summer. We actually, at the time of this report, we had a hundred and forty intern applications. I can tell you that as of three o'clock today, that number has now up to a hundred and fifty-three. We've included at seven, at least seven, in, in the area of construction. And so we are very excited about our, our internships. We will begin interviewing the, the interview process for the students next week and the following week. I want to, let me get, I'm, let me get my phone. I wanted to give you a list of some of our current partners. I'm actually, we're actually still in the process of adding some additional partners, because the large number of CNA students that we have, we have, there's seventy, seventy-six CNAs looking for certain, for jobs. And so we will actually, we're actually in negotiation with Hillcrest at the moment to add them to our list. But let me give you just a list of some of our internship partners. The City of Waco, Byrd Culgen Ford, Allen Samuels, Hobbs Bonded Fiber, Texas Tech at the MCC Campus, Freedom Schools, the Mayborn Museum, the YMCA, Capstone Mechanical, Waco Child Nutrition, Waco Advanced Academics, Providence Park, Creative Waco, Jeffrey Place, Waco ISD Technology, the Waco Hilton, Jim Blan Construction, Waco ISD Police Department, and Magnolia. Those are all our current partners. So we are eluding to add more, especially in the area of health science. So not all a hundred and fifty students will be placed in an internship. This situation is, they have to interview and be selected for the internship. So we hope to place, I, you know, our goal was to be at a hundred, so I hope by 2020, we may reach that goal this year. That would be wonderful. But once again, this is a competitive process. These internships, we want them to be valued, just like they would going out for a job. They have resumes they turn in, they go through the full interview process. And so it's just exciting to have the program grow from the, you know, twenty students we had the first year we did it, to the year four, and we're at a hundred and fifty-three applicants.
Go ahead, Ms. Slade.
Donna, so you partially commented on it. So those applications, you don't have any figures on how that would translate to participants' acceptance?
No, sir, because we tell our business partners, you know, oftentimes, just like when you interview someone for a job, there, you may not find the fit for your company. So we cannot, we do not require the business partners to say, yes, I will take one. We say, come to our interview process. If you find that person with the skills you need and fits the personality of your business, then you hire them. If not, then, so I, I don't know. Oftentimes, I will tell you this, we'll have business partners, they'll walk in and they're going to hire, they interview four kids, and their original plan was to hire one, and they'll hire all four. So it's kind of hard to project exactly how many of those will get internships, but.
I was just wondering from prior experience.
From prior experience, it's about, there's usually about ten percent. I think last year, we had about twenty that didn't get placed, so.
How many were placed?
We had seventy-eight last year.
So you're getting closer to that hundred.
Yeah, we're getting closer, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm really excited about this, can you tell? This is wonderful.
What kind of, I, I know at one point, this was, wasn't the P-20 Council also involved in this, as sort of a?
The Prosper Waco has been involved with us, and not really the P-20 Council, but Prosper Waco has, has been a part of helping us with this and making some calls for us to set the internships. And we've learned a lot over the years and made adjustments, and, you know, we're really excited. The kids are really excited about this prospect. I think the fact that they might, we have some Guam kids that are excited that they might get warehouse jobs at Magnolia, has kind of got some kids rather excited.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Item six, or item set on the consent agenda next week. Does anybody have any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? Ms. Davis has a question?
I got a question. We have a substitute on the budget amendments. We have amendment to add a portable at Parkdale. We are going to have to also add one at Lake Waco, Lake Eyre, sorry.
That's, that's on our dais, right? The revised.
You have that in there. So there's, we have, it will be in next week's agenda to approve two-hundred-and-forty thousand rather than a hundred-and-twenty thousand we originally brought forward.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, anything on the consent agenda? And obviously, you can pull anything that you want to discuss next week during the meeting. Dr. Rob, you have any announcements or anything?
I guess it's the Donna Show again, because she has a job fair coming up on her campus that her business advisory board talked about today, and it's going to be real exciting. I understand that they're looking at doing some pallet moving competitions with the forklift, which sounded interesting to me. So we encourage you to come out on, is it May first?
We have one next week at Guam, the fall week at Guaca, and then CTE signing every day is.
So if you want to see some of this in action, get a chance to go over to either one of these sites, and you'll be amazed.
Did you say forklift?
Forklift.
Did we get a shot of hazel on the?
Lord had it on. Lord had it on.
We can, we can make sure we have some. Also, University High School, we're having our Cafe Day, and starting next year, we'll have meals twice a month at the Cafe University High School. So, and it's delicious.
It is delicious.
Three delicious?
Dr. Rob came in with us, she tells us how delicious.
I was preparing myself, that was the gumbo day.
All right. So we've got delicious gumbo forklifts and a signing day on May third. Anything, anything else from the day? Good announcement. Uh, then hearing no objection, we'll stand adjourned.